First, I think, just as we've been doing, TCAT, not much has changed since the last time that we spoke. We are still attempting to help facilitate an agreement being entered between Boys and Girls Club and TCAT on that road sale, that part of that right-of-way. The biggest hang-up it seems to me right now is who's going to maintain that. TCAT had sent over to us a license agreement that said that they would be maintaining it, but then that was recanted. I don't know that the person who sent it had obtained the authority from the higher-ups to send that over, so that was pulled back. There was, at least from a local level, the Boys and Girls Club, I believe, was told that TCAT would maintain that, that road and that right-of-way. That apparently, the person that I'm speaking to at TCAT or TBR is saying, "Well, we never heard that." So, there's definitely some disconnect there. I've spoken with the Boys and Girls Club attorney. We've kind of brainstormed on what we can do to hopefully get this to a resolution and maybe that we just need to have another, hopefully, scheduled pretty quickly conference call with all them, all parties to hopefully nail that out so we can get that in place and the city can see them what you all want to see them, that that's maintained for and remains open for the Boys and Girls Club and their access, so.
Is that the last part of?
I mean, I think as far as, as far as what we are hoping to see agreement-wise, I think, you know, obviously the city, we've got our license agreement, we're good, we're moving forward. I think Joey had some comments or was contacted today on just kind of properties and certain move stuff, so, but I do think it was part of this council wanted to see that, you know, that that agreement was reached between TCAT and, and the Boys and Girls Club, so we're just trying to help facilitate that and get them to, for that committee wrapped up.
My question is, we're not talking about very much street view.
We're not.
I don't, what would be wrong with just saying, "We'll take care of it"?
Well, one, you've already abandoned it to the adjoining properties. The property belongs to the Board of Regents and of the Boys and Girls Club. So, it's officially a driveway. That's correct. Not officially, it's what it really is.
It's the main entry point for TCAT to the building that's going to be on that lower level, which is going to house, it's a very, very long building, it's going to have at least 12 or more classrooms, and then the individuals accessing that building will be in their little parking lot. So, I don't know what the problem is with retaining it. And that's also where the trucks are going to go in to unload equipment. I mean, you're talking about big trucks, there's going to be a lot of heavy vehicle traffic over that road.
You're saying the other problem is TCAT.
That's right.
And it's also the access for a fire department. That's the main, for that entire side, that's access to firefighters, which people never have to go. If they do, you want them to have access.
Well, that's a question, maybe, you know, I hadn't thought about that, but Chief, I know, may I ask Chief a question this time, about fire access? Because I know in neighborhoods and a cul-de-sac, there's a new requirement on how large that is so that you can navigate in there. Has that been discussed?
The plans for TCAT are state-reviewed. I can't answer you honestly as to whether the turnaround's been reviewed, but it is a state project and they have been involved all along.
So, the state by martial will?
Yes, ma'am.
The concept plan is that we have seen this mixed, that is the fire line, so there's definitely a different thing.
So, then it seems to me that would be a requirement for them to provide that access that is a, an adequate access.
They will be required, and they'll have to accommodate our largest vehicle. But again, the state has the jurisdiction and we comment, we input, and they'll see that it's taken care of.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
That's two access points then for them, because if you come in, there's a gate to the ride that goes into a parking lot that's already there, that they already used. And then this one is a main thoroughfare to their new building. Yes, the only way to get to their new building.
Hopefully, we get that much wrapped up and taken care of, so.
I think it's fair to say the real problem is a lack of communication among their employees.
No one seems to know, but yeah, there's so many moving parts over there and...
And you're the messenger, I'm sorry.
One person doesn't seem to have the authority to make things look and say...
They just keep doing what you're doing, hoping to find out.
We'll hopefully get it wrapped up, so, all right, next, and what we came out and found this.
Well, next time I would suggest that we not give them the property until we've got all that in hand.
I suggested that.
We wanted to, we wanted to get our part of it.
This is the time for us to do so.
There you go, boy. Come next time, that is it.
All right. Alcohol. There are a few things that need to be changed. I've kind of broken this down into required law changes. Obviously, I think you all know or have been aware that for liquor stores, sale of wine and grocery stores, hours have changed, that can now be sold on Sundays. Liquor stores can be open on Sundays. The holidays changed, there used to be probably about six holidays that liquor stores were required to be closed on. Wine was not allowed to be sold in grocery stores on. That has changed. This is all pursuant to state law, so that's what my suggestion is, is while we're maybe looking at opening up our alcohol ordinances, we just go ahead and make account for these changes. Then also, within our ordinance right now, under regulations of sales, we currently prohibit any kind of public display, public drinking. Obviously, you all have passed, and we've got account for the special event permits, beer permits, that allow for the drinking of alcohol to occur at places like the farmer's market, you know, outside for some of these special events. So, my suggestion would be just to add in some language that, you know, obviously you cannot, you can't, you know, walk up and down the streets unless it is in, it's pursuant to that special event that's occurring and you're, you know, within those parameters. Also, the law is going to change effective August the first, where that certificate of compliance, that usually comes back before you all for liquor stores every two years, we have to, I think we basically update background checks to make sure they haven't been charged with anything, and that has to come before you. The state is no longer requiring these certificates of compliance, so we need to just delete that. We have that contained within our current ordinance. And then again, basically, the wine and grocery stores is pretty similar to what I just talked about with the liquor stores. So, those are some of the changes that I believe we need to, we need to just change within our ordinance to comply with state law. Then, on the second page, I have listed out just some different discretionary changes that I think are up for maybe discussion. Obviously, the first one is, and I think there's been some communications with the city, we, when we changed our beer ordinance, gosh, it's been probably a few years ago now, we made account for microbreweries. What we did not address at that time was a craft beer enterprise, which is basically a business that, you know, they're the ones that are selling the craft beer. They're not necessarily associated with an actual brewery or microbrewery. So, I've put in just some different definitions to be able to make account for a craft beer establishment enterprise. Things that these retailers often do is they provide growlers, which is where you can purchase the craft beer, have it be filled up, and purchase those for, to take home off-premise consumption. So, that's something just to think about, adding those definitions in. Again, I believe there's maybe been some contacts, some people interested in coming to town that would meet one of these, they don't meet the definition of a microbrewer because they don't brew their own beer, they're not associated with a brewery, but they, they would be selling these craft beers. And then, if you all are inclined to add those definitions, then we would basically just go in and kind of insert the craft beer enterprise in where we also have microbrewers, as far as the locations, the type of permit that they would have to get. They'd have to have an on and off-premise permit. And then there's, I've also seen language for, that's the special, special growler permit that is very detailed on different rules and regulations for those growlers. What type of a container it's in, the type of seal, what kind of label is put on it. So, not sure, thoughts on making, making a change for those type of establishments to come to Moorestown? I don't know if anybody from staff has been in that or been in contact directly with some interested parties.
We have had, I think Steve said that someone had been interested in looking at a couple of buildings downtown.
Yes.
I don't think anybody from planning's still here.
We have had a couple of different parties looking at that, with this type of business.
But did I hear you say something, it's, you wouldn't necessarily have to be a microbrewery?
Correct. The, the, microbreweries and craft beer enterprises are two, basically the microbrewery, they are, they're either associated with a brewery directly or they brew their own beer. Whereas this is, you know, they, a craft beer enterprise is somewhere like, I don't know if you've heard of Cattle Pint, they've got one of those in Long Island, I think, Pigeon Falls, Seaverville, but where they're more connected with kind of local, local places that brew beer, and then they just bring that in, and, you know, the case or whatever. So, they're not associated, they don't do, they don't brew their own beer, whereas a microbrewery, they do, so.
I'm going to show, I'm, definition of a growler, that's not like, that's what, two liters it says? Is that a one-person consumer consumption kind of?
I would be like, this is, this is not your person!
Oh, no, act like you don't know that.
I hate, I have never consumed one all on my own, but, you get them and you take them home. But they're, it's sealed, and then, you know, so, it is primarily for you to then be able to buy, they, the, you know, workers of the craft beer enterprise, they would fill that up for you, seal it, and then you would take it home for off-premise consumption.
So, if you don't want a kid, you can growl.
Basically, yes.
It allows you to get those high-quality specialized premium beers.
That must keep, preserve it.
Yeah.
That's not new, Kate. I was a kid, I'd go down to the local salon, just let go up on the bar and hand in a bucket and carry it home for my dad. That's not the term, that's not the growler term that she's using.
He growls if you didn't do it.
Then another, and I don't know, I have more questions just about that in particular, but then another kind of discretionary change, we talked about this probably months ago when the gentleman from AMC, the movie theaters, had contacted us about coming to do a presentation or reaching out and seeing just our thoughts on allowing the movie theater to be able to sell alcohol. They, I guess, are in the process of merging, they've been merging with Carmike and maybe some other theaters, and so I reached back out to their attorney to see when we could schedule a time for them to come present to you all, and he's just kind of said they've been, they've been busy with some of that merger. He, you know, looked at his schedule, they're trying to figure out, you know, if, if at this point they are ready to move forward with trying to sell alcohol in the Moorestown movie theater. But, again, I thought if we are going to maybe go ahead and open back up this alcohol ordinance, here's at least a definition for a theater, because our current ordinance does not provide for any kind of alcohol to be sold, sold at our movie theater. We could go ahead and put this definition in there of a theater. This is pretty much straight from the Tennessee statute, and then we could then add theaters in with the on-premise, on-premise permit and on-premise consumption. So, there's another definition, or, again, we're not opening up definitions.
So, what you're saying is all of these under law changes, these are changes that we would make to come into compliance with state law now, and discretionary is we can change if we want to.
Correct.
If, but these changes, recommended they be on the next agenda, be prepared for changes of what?
It, I mean, it would be a pretty quick ordinance change. I could, I could get that, get an ordinance prepared to modify that too, because again, primarily to add in some of these definitions.
Okay.
Under that.
The discretionary changes, I guess council may want to mull it over a little bit, but law changes getting in compliance, that's probably more urgent of the two.
Yes, yes, yes.
Could we, could we talk about the theater discretionary one?
Yeah, I'd like to put that one on hold, too. I'm okay with the chapter two beer on discretionary, even the growler. But theater part, we probably ought, my thinking is we ought to pause on that one until we get a presentation, there's some questions there, but whatever, what's the will of the council?
I should, I think they should be allowed their presentation.
You okay with the first, the first discretionary one under the chapter two beer?
Bob says, "Beer's allowed, it is theater." It is, and it doesn't count for it.
Under eight, one twelve, that would eliminate, like we've had recently, a few of those coming to us to have their licenses renewed, we don't, we wouldn't have to do that anymore.
Correct.
And theoretically, most of those individuals are selling beer, so they go through that review with us under the beer ordinance, correct, or not?
No, liquor stores, we do not have any control over their beer sales. They are solely regulated by ABC.
Okay, so then we would have, our police department, our investigator would have nothing to do with liquor, liquor stores, it would be a state. And are there requirements then along the same line as being as stringent as ours are? Or more so, probably less?
With the state, yes, I mean, what we see is usually it is. Now, I think it's probably a difficult process to, you know, fulfill your application to be able to open a liquor store, but obviously, we've got our rules right now on, you know, the number of liquor stores that can be in the city of Moorestown, so, but as far as, as any of our folks, I guess, in a sense, having, you know, any kind of review over that application and things like that, no, we don't.
What if a liquor store runs into some, where they're not in compliance? Are you saying that we don't have any recourse or?
It's, it's going to be the ABC, the state.
I might ask our chief overhaul, do you have some thoughts on this? The ABC pretty diligent as far as policing there from their end, or?
Yes, sir, they are. They actually, you know, the ABC comes in to do an operation, they waxed cooperation from us, and historically in the past, we've always assisted in those cooperations, and they actually are very diligent about the state laws and guidelines we follow under the alcohol ordinances.
All right. So, you're comfortable with all of that?
Yes, sir, we can't technically make a law that supersedes state law, and all this does is says, "This is the state law, we understand that, we'll come into compliance with it." So, but we have had, from operational standpoint, we've had good relationships with ABC.
And they're about, so it wouldn't be unusual if someone, police department officer, noticed something that would interest the ABC, you know, this alert them to?
Absolutely, that'd be great, we could do that. If our officers found that there was a problem or we received a complaint, then we, even today, we will bring, we will pass that on to ABC, then we'll assist them in looking into that complaint.
Okay.
Lorna, is there anything, anything else that we need to review in the ordinance since we are changing it?
And I've got, we've got copies of the full ordinance we can look through. I mean, I think the only other thing, I think, that kind of comes to my mind that we've batted around over the past probably several years is just to give them that distance requirement that, that we still have in there, I think, in regards to the beer on the distance that it can be sold from public buildings, churches, schools, anything like that, so.
Okay, I'm here for thoughts on this. Yeah, in terms of timing, we had hoped that we would have the presentation from the theater folks and do this all at once. It's the reason we've kind of been sitting on some of this, waiting for that to happen, to do it at one time, but since they're in delay mode, we thought we'd work on it right now to get the rest of it done.
Mayor, I can go with the recommendations that are bringing this into compliance with the state holding on the theater and not addressing, not doing any changes to the distance at this time.
I hope it doesn't overwhelm, sir.
You're getting warmed up, aren't you?
All right, well, hopefully it's next to, may I be a little bit shorter? Here is, I need to just briefly talk about the municipal judge and more so, naming a substitute judge. I've got written what the current code states, and it is just very simple that municipal court judges, general session court judges are empowered to sit by interchange for other municipal court judges. The law is changing effective July one, where basically it's either, if the current municipal judge is unable to preside for any reason, you know, vacation, sickness, whatever, then a special substitute judge needs to be determined pursuant to an ordinance of city council. But if there's not that ordinance, then the municipal court judge can designate in writing the name of a special substitute judge. So, we just need to, right now, we don't have any kind of ordinance that addresses, you know, a substitute judge or if the current municipal judge is unavailable. What I believe has been done, because I'm sure most of you all know, Ed Simkowski, he is, he stands in pretty much, I think, all the time, anytime that the current municipal judge cannot attend, you know, over city court, doing swearing-in ceremonies, things like that. I don't know if there's anything in writing, if he's got any kind of an agreement or if council actually designated him or appointed him, you're saying that, yes, don't think there was?
Council appointed him November the fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, for a four-year term, set to expire twelve, two twenty.
So, we have, in a sense, we have kind of, I guess, done with the first part of this new statute, where you all have designated, you've already designated the substitute judge. So, my suggestion would be then, and I've listed at the bottom just three different options that I see that comply with this statute, either we just go ahead and we write in an ordinance, add it into the city judge part of the ordinance, that council shall make a designation of who the special substitute judge is to stand in at the place of the current municipal judge. So, we can just do that, and then just, you know, obviously, we've got this designation with Mr. Simkowski, or, you know, obviously, the other couple of options are, you just don't create any kind of, you don't create an ordinance, you don't say, "Hey, we're going to be the ones to designate this substitute judge," and then leave it up to the current municipal judge to just, he can designate in writing who he wants to stand in his place. Or, you know, obviously, we could also put just something in, a simple little ordinance that would say that you all are going to, the current municipal judge can designate who the substitute judge is, so. Those are, those are kind of three options that I see with this new law that's going to come into effect. Again, it sounds like right now what you all are doing is you're doing, again, this first part of it, so if that's what you wish to continue to do, we can just create an ordinance to get that in effect.
Who does he report to now? Who does the judge report to when he's going to have a substitute? Or does, do you just know that when you arrive in court?
It's coordinated between the judge and the court.
And was it the current judge that was appointed on November fifteenth?
That was the substitute judge, Mr. Simkowski, yes. Current, current city judge is Matt Sexton, who's still got, I think he's got two years left on his term as well.
So, we need to just leave it like it is.
Well, I think if, if you all are saying that the council is the one who's going to continue to designate this special substitute judge, then we do need to make that part of the, part of the ordinance that gives you that authority.
What happens if the substitute needs a substitute?
Court's code.
Probably, although according to Mr. Sexton, Mr. Simkowski has, has always, he's never turned down a request to be on that, so.
Well, obviously, there's left the judge appointing him. He's happy with Mr. Simkowski, just letting him do it, with that claim, just put it in the paper.
Put it in the ordinance?
Yeah, absolutely. It's not been a problem since two thousand sixteen, has it?
Well, it's working the way it is, and right now, we have a judge and we have an appointed substitute judge. So, just leave it like it is.
Just write it up so we can approve it, is what you're saying?
Right, exactly.
So, you would just want, basically, we could just make it clear that the municipal court judge is to comply with this law and shall be the one who designates the special substitute judge?
We will.
You would?
We would.
Okay, I thought I heard.
Certainly, it is recommendation.
Well, I mean, if he's, if it's not had a problem since two thousand sixteen, and I figured that his recommendation, there wouldn't be anything wrong with it.
Well, it's in the council, it's two thousand.
If we'd appointed Mr. Simkowski?
We definitely did.
Okay, if we did, probably we'd just leave it like it is, because it's not broken, no shit. Anybody wish for it?
Well, but state law change, do what we have been doing, we had fixed yours.
We need to just put in an ordinance that council would designate.
We just have to make it official with official language.
Okay, all right. The only other thing, while I've got your all's attention, and it's not on this list right here, just because we did just this morning have a meeting with Redflex and cameras, and here's a printout that I got shortly before the meeting. Basically, we met because our current contract with them is set to expire August the fourth, and so we need to pursue it to that contract and then add them, an amendment to that contract. We have to notify them, basically, July fourth, if we're going to renew for a two-year period. And so, we are, we determined that we obviously need to get back before you all on July the second, basically a decision so that we can notify them one way or another of what we're going to do. So, we had discussions, and again, the law has changed, I'm sure you all have been made aware of the change in the law as far as the unmanned traffic cameras that monitor speed. Those basically are pretty much kind of gone by the wayside. And so, what we have right now is, obviously, we're in this contract where we have those speed cameras, we have the red light cameras, and so it's just, we need to make a determination of what do we want to do with Redflex going forward? Do we want to try and renew, stick with everything that we have now? Do we want to cut back on the scope, do away with the speed cameras, keep the intersection cameras, red light cameras, so, but again, we do have to, we are going to have to make some kind of a decision, give notification to them in the next couple of weeks, so we wanted to get this to your all's attention.
It's my opinion that the intersection cameras are a great asset to the city. I think that those things work fine, I think when people see the signs that says there's intersection cameras there, it slows people down a little bit. I, I'm definitely against the speed cameras on the main highways. I just think that's entrapment.
Just come get your stuff, take it back home, man.
I agree with Tommy that the, I think the data shows that the accidents have been reduced and the intersections were safer with the red light cameras, and I had paid my fair share of those.
You know, I think that there are other intersections that I think we're discussing now that needs those. I think there's going to have to be one down at Merchant Green and a few places, but the twenty-five E and the one sixty. Our new superintendent of schools' wife got one on twenty-five E coming down to be interviewed with her husband for the job, and it was one mile over the allocated distance between the, what is it? It's a fifty-five mile zone, and you, they'll let you go to fifty-eight or whatever it is, or sixty-four. is, or sixty-four, but it was one mile over whatever requirement was, and I think that's just wrong.
She was speeding.
That's true, she was speeding.
I agree that the, the red light cameras and the intersections are a safety feature, and those intersections are safer, and I, I think that makes, the speed cameras through the intersection, the question is, if we continue and we keep the intersection cameras in, which it sounds like that we have leaning that way, I think the question is, do we also detect speed through the intersections? Not just do you run a red light, but did you speed through the intersection? That's, I agree, I, I'd be glad to see the speed cameras on twenty-five E and one sixty go, and, and, but as far as keeping the intersection cameras there, question is, do we want to take it red light running only, or red light running and speeding through intersections?
Well, sometimes people speed up to get through red lights, so it may be.
So, that's an argument to also monitor speed.
I don't think we need to make this decision, no, I think we need to have a work session about this.
That's what we're in, is a work session.
We go out and talk about different, I ain't gonna agree to.
I think she is.
If you've got, if you've got forward that does, then you win, I lose.
Okay, but the reason, the urgency is, we've got to give them thirty days notice, thirty days is our next.
What'd you say, July what?
Well, July the second is the next meeting, July the fourth would be.
So, we need, we need.
Today's what?
Today's eighteen.
The night thing, eighteen? A lot of days in between, we talked about this.
I don't think there's no meeting time.
I understand that.
Okay.
I understand that.
Did, um.
I think they need to go a while away, that's better than paper.
You can still keep.
I don't think you help anything.
Lauren, you can still.
I think it might help you, chief.
Well, and, and, I, I don't.
So, I have an idea, I'll show you what happened.
My, my opinion, and I, I'm actually, I'm.
He said, she said.
With this change in the law, that we cannot, any new, renew, any renewal, any new contract, you, the only place that you can have speed cameras pursuant to this state statute is in an S curve or in a school zone, so I don't know that legally, we would be able to keep the speed in those intersections.
That's what I'm.
I think the only thing you're going to be able to keep legally is the, the running of red light.
Would you check in at that place?
I, 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 I think we ought to have the intersection cameras, and as many as we can put, as many places that it's, that it hits the police department.
I got none of that.
I think we could do that with the speed cameras, anywhere, I think is wrong.
But, speed cameras are not affecting statutory, that, that don't work.
Believe me, if they were allowed, I still wouldn't want them.
So, we're thinking, speed cameras go, intersections stay?
Right.
Just red light only.
And if he wants to, while we're doing this, if he wants to add an intersection or two?
Yeah, but it's only, it's only red light only.
That's right, yes, yes.
I don't have a problem with that, I could all admit every intersection in Moorestown.
I wish we had.
We can do.
Hey, you know, Redflex is well go with that.
We can say, intersection lights, and then, if, 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 make a decision on speed, but we got notified that on the contract, speed cameras on the, speed cameras only on one sixty and twenty-five, no intersections continued.
I think, Mayor, if you were allowed to have a vote right now, which you can't, but if you were allowed to have a vote, speed would be voted down, anywhere.
So, didn't you say it's against state law now to do the speed in the intersection?
It had, it has changed.
Only thing you can do now is red light, if you want to say red light, that's good, that's the only one you can do.
Or school zones and.
Well, I don't have a problem with that at all.
Okay. Well, what we're doing now is discussing the actual vote, would have to be on July the second, get into that thirty day compliance, you okay with that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Let's talk about it later, okay?
Mayor, could Lauren?
I'll probably vote to.
Could Lauren research that and send it to us along, because I was thinking that was why we were gonna really lose the two speed cameras on one sixties, because you can no longer do speed cameras, but it may not have been if they weren't associated already with the red light.
No, it is, it is unmanned speed, it can only be in S curves or in a school zone.
Okay, that answers that question.
Makes it moot point, but if you send that along, it's.
A little bit of J. Burton.
Okay, anything else, Lauren, is that all your stuff?
So, the recap, we'll bring back for July second, a close contract for, for Redflex, the reflexive terms you talked about, and an alcohol ordinance, and an ordinance for a municipal judge, all three of those things were recommended for us to get a text agenda.
I think also, I heard that if you wanted to add an intersection.
We, yes, and I think that, that is open, that's on the table, that, the current, our current contract states that as well, and, again, with our discussions with their representative this morning, I believe that they are amenable to us determining future locations, future intersections.
The state law does provide for a specific process to certify that an intersection qualifies, which requires we have to have a third-party traffic engineer study the intersection, give you a report before, before.
Right.
Is it still that the speed town chief has to change one mile prior to the red light?
I'm sorry, what was it?
This is a speed, well, it didn't matter, speed didn't matter, never forget that, we'll talk about that in twelve.
All right, anything else? Are we done?